So I'd like to call to order the Board of School Commissioners regularly scheduled meeting tonight, and all those that care to join, stand with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to note that all Commissioners are in attendance. And next up would be an approval of the agenda, and on our desks was, the only addition was an addendum to the personnel memo.
Moved there we approve the agenda as amended?
Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion carries. So, first up on our agenda is our, ask Peter Fagan to come forward. Peter Fagan has been appointed by the mayor to fulfill Brittany Cavakis's seat as she stepped down through her term that ends in March, so Peter is no stranger to this boardroom. He's certainly served his time here and in the state legislature, so I welcome Peter, and if you would like to say a few words on your behalf, and then if anyone has questions.
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. It's always, you know, it's always good to be back. I served thirteen years here and finished the term. I did not resign my term. I have never resigned anything. Finished the term and just continued work in the State House. The work of the Appropriations Committee, which I am on, is constant, year-round, and almost overwhelming at times, just the sheer volume of it, and I just felt that I had to give it more attention than continuing to split my time. So I decided to not run, to put my time into the House Appropriations Committee and the Legislature, where I was on for ten years, and of course, I am not running again, and I am retiring from that position. So when the mayor asked me to kindly fill the rest of the term, I thought about it for twenty-four hours and then called him back and said I would.
Put yourself out there. Anyone have any questions for Peter? No? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to vote on the appointment of Peter Fagan to the Board on the mayoral appointment.
My second thought?
Is that going to be by ballot?
We can do it by Australian ballot. So is that what the Board wants to do? Australian ballot?
Motion.
That's fine.
No? Okay. So we will do it via voice vote then. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. Welcome, Peter.
Thank you.
Come on back. I don't know which side of the table, we were on that side before, weren't we?
That's actually, that's actually perfect, like only, I think, one seat down from where I was for thirteen years, so thank you very much. Somebody remember.
Thank you, exactly.
Somebody remember.
You're welcome. Spread out, now I have to keep my business.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Probably have an updated chair.
So next up then, we have our regular consent agenda with the previous meeting minutes, personnel memos, an addendum, a couple Stafford Center bids, the first reading of the nondiscriminatory school mascot branding policy, and second readings of two other policies. So I'd entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And then next up is communications. We haven't received any written communication, and we don't have any...
We need to swear, Peter, and...
Oh, yes.
Forgot about that.
We do. We need to make them legitimate.
I signed it already, so suppose maybe I ought to...
You ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Peter Fagan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office of Rutland City School Commissioner.
That I will faithfully execute the office of Rutland City School Commissioner.
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
Best of my judgment and abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now you're official, sorry. I want to cut you out, pomp and circumstance. Okay, so now we are back on communications, and we did not have anyone in the public sign up for public input, so that moves us on to the school and program updates, and I'll turn it over to our student representatives.
RIS will welcome families on Thursday, September fifteenth for our open house. Grades three to five will meet from 5:30 to 6:00, meet with the administrators from 6:00 to 6:15, and grades four to six from 6:15 to 6:45. After five days of in-service, working on building our community and strengthening our practices, the RIS are excited to welcome in a new school year. For Northwest School, we would like to invite all families to Meet the Teacher Night on September fourteenth, beginning at 6:00 p.m. This will be a chance for you to tour the school and meet your students' teachers. Please visit our Northwest website, Facebook page, or follow us on Twitter. Northeast School is having their Meet the Teacher Night on the evening of September twenty-first. Kindergarten is from 6:00 to 6:30, first grade is from 6:30 to 7:00, and second grade is from 7:00 to 7:30. Announcements and details for all Northeast events will go home in school folders, will be posted on the Northeast Facebook page, and will be posted by teachers on your Child CSO accounts.
At Rutland High School, freshmen arrive tomorrow for their orientation day. Students will tour the building, meet with their advisors, and rotate through their schedules. Most importantly, they will end the day with ice cream. The fall season is off and running. Practices have been happening for about two weeks, and games begin this week. Golf is the first to compete tomorrow, field hockey and football this weekend, and girls' country next week. On Wednesday, Stafford will welcome students from ten area high schools along with several homeschool students. The first three days, students will spend the majority of their time with their technical program area, working towards building a strong learning community. We will have all school assembly on Thursday morning, and our back-to-school night will be on Thursday, September fifteenth. We look forward to welcoming students and their families into our building that evening. Allen Street Campus had a jam-packed and productive summer, and we plan to keep that forward momentum all year long. We will continue working an inclusive stigma-free campus while embracing a growth mindset. Our annual open-house barbecue family fun night will be held on September twenty-ninth from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We have an entire evening of fun activities, games, bikes, and burgers. Our hero program representative will be onsite to discuss a pilot healthcare exploration program with Rutland Regional Medical Center. We hope to see you there. Rutland Middle School was buzzing this summer. Approximately forty students attended our recovery summer boot camps in three sessions over a six-week period. This year, five teachers, Marissa Aston, Chris Van Skiver, Katie Gino, Ally Mack, and Ollie Brown, as well as Erica Colludi, one of our school counselors, created a project based entitled "Le Du J- Le Du Journet," our high school, or high class gourmet food. Students chose a menu of foods they wanted to prepare for their meal, and learned the geographical origin of the food, the reproduction and genetics of the plants used, calculated the budget for the food, and each individual meat, and designed a menu. This information was put into a Google slideshow, weaving all the disciplines together. Students cooked the meal and served it to their families, administrators, custodians, teachers, and themselves. It was delicious. During dessert, we enjoyed listening to the slideshow presentation. It was a great experience that was incredibly well-received by the families. We're excited to see students tomorrow, and administrator and counselor will be at each house entrance to welcome all of our students to a new school year. We began this practice during the pandemic, and it has been such a positive experience for both our teachers and adults, that it has become a regular practice, even without the health checks.
Thank you both very much.
Allison, I just had a question. To go back to the public input, I know during COVID and when meetings were remote, people needed to sign up, but can someone speak if they haven't signed up previously, or...
It's on the website, and there's a sign-up sheet that is there when people come in.
Okay. No, I was just curious of the process and...
Yeah, they can sign up in person.
Okay.
At the time of the meeting. Okay? All right, great. So next up then will be our central office report, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Olson.
Thank you, Allison. It's been a long, hot summer. Is that a song?
It's a song.
But we are so excited to have everybody back. It's good to see you guys. And so, school starts tomorrow. We're welcoming our families back, we're welcoming our kids. Staff has been in the building for the last five days, working very hard to get everybody ready, and so it's kind of boring without the kids, so we're getting excited for tomorrow. So tomorrow will be a fun day, and we hope all the families and their students have a really enriching, rewarding year with us. So, good to be back. I wanted to commend Rutland High School for a recognition that they received just a few, a couple weeks ago, they heard the news. For the past four years or so, I think, they've been working with this organization called Marzano Research, and they go through a process of reflection and study, and then improvement within their systems, and they go through step-by-step how a school works and how they could change things or improve things to make it better. So the high school's worked on this process for the past four years and achieved like a commendation for what they call Level One, Level Two, and now they receive Level Three certification from Marzano Research. And it, in this case, they were working on making sure that the curriculum is up to date and where it should be, making sure it's strong, and that we reach all kids with the curriculum that we're offering. So that took a lot of work. It's some, it's an organization that is known around the country, and they've got schools around the country that they recognize in this format, and I wanted to commend the high school for that, and Steve Sampson as well for helping delete it, Susan Ponto and Mike Ellis, I think they were the leadership in that group. I wanted to give the Board an update on hiring.
Could we applaud that?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. So sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm in a rush. With hiring, we, you know, this has been a hard year for everybody across the economy finding staff, and of course, it affects education as well. It affects the education of Vermont, and in the middle of the summer, there was, the Vermont Superintendent's Association did a poll to see where people are at with the hiring process, and we were in pretty good shape, and so by the end of the summer, we've pretty much got to where we need to be. We have all positions filled except for pieces of a couple in our support services group, and Pam is working to cover that, and we have, I think, five para openings that are still ready to be filled, so if anybody's interested in that, you can check in with us. So I wanted to thank all the folks that were involved in hiring this year. It was a major task. Teachers, staff around the district, and administrators did a lot of work to make sure we have a really, really good staff coming into the district. Those folks have come, you know, with us during in-service, they're really excited to be here, and it's great for us to have new people to work off of and share the leadership of the district with them. So, and we want to welcome them as well, so I think that's where we're at with hiring. We should be in good shape. I wanted to give the Board a quick update on the portrait of the graduate work that we talked about last spring. We are starting that work. We've met with Patel for Kids, the organization that's going to lead that with us, and Ted Plamanis is going to talk about that with the Finance and Strategic Planning Group next week, Ted, Tuesday, and then we'll come back to the Board with more information. So that's going to be a one semester deal. We think we can finish this process by, well, about by January or so, and we'll have a real good vision of what we want a Rutland City School student to be by the end of thirteen years. I wanted to briefly talk about COVID and how we're approaching that this year. We got guidance from the state on August tenth, and it's similar to the way things were at the end of the school year, and so I'll just, I'll just note these practices so people are aware. And, you know, basically what we're kind of doing is kind of going back to the way things were before COVID. So if you are sick, just like in the past, whether you, you know, however you're sick, we ask that you stay home and get well, and hopefully not bring a cold into the building. But that's a recommendation. Last year, over the past two years, we were testing kids to see if they were, if they were sick, and we had kind of had some confirmation of that. That's not a requirement this year, so if you are coming back into school, you don't have to test to come back. It's just a recommendation that you do, so that applies to staff and students. So staying in the building or coming back into the building, testing is not required. If you do have COVID, though, if you find out that you have COVID-19, we would hope that you would follow the recommendations that the Vermont Department of Health is offering, so that's the, you know, you want to stay out of connections with people, you want to stay home for five days if you can, make sure your symptoms are all set before you come back. But that's still just a recommendation. Wearing a mask in a school setting is a decision that is up to families and individuals. It's not part of what the school is getting involved in this year, and we also, again, are encouraging students and staff to get vaccinated and stay up to date on that. So it's, they're all recommendations, and really, we're kind of going back to the way things were before we had the pandemic. I would like to, again, thank the community, the families, the students, the staff, for everything that went into surviving that pandemic, and I think we did an excellent job dealing with it. It was a really tough two years, but I think this district did it very well, so I'd like to thank everybody for that. And that's it for me.
All right. Now did that, is the recovery update separate?
Yeah, that's a separate thing with Rob.
So you did AMB, so now we're on C?
Yep, we're on C.
Are the principals...
Oh, I'm sorry. Opening of school report, yes. I skipped that, yeah. No, that's my fault, yeah. Yeah, if we could, could we have the, each principal come up and say a couple words about tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Yeah, sorry about that. Leading off.
Jump right in.
I'm Kristi Colludi, I'm the principal of Northwest, so this is my first board meeting here. Let's see, so first of all, I would like to thank Central Office and the community for such a warm welcome. It has been fantastic. We had a great in-service the last few days, and we're super excited. I can't wait for the kids to come back, keep the teachers a little bit busier, so they're not in my office all the time, but super excited about that. I'd like to thank Mark Burkowski and Jen Rukelat, our custodians. They have done an amazing job. We had a full tapestry and summer program at our schools. They had about two weeks to get the building in order, and they've done a phenomenal job, so I'm super excited about that. If anybody has any questions, you know, feel free to reach out. I'm new to this, and if I don't have the answer, I will certainly find it, so thank you to a great start.
Hi, everybody. I'm Suzanne Engels, principal of Northeast School, and we've been very busy at Northeast this summer. We had students not at Northeast School but attending Tapestry at RIS, and they had a great time, lots of special events and activities for Tapestry. We at Northeast did host a five-week pre-K program that Pam Reed helped us get some funding for, and it was for students who are entering our school in kindergarten, really helped them. It acted as a bridge to help them transition into our school. Great opportunity, I hope we'll be able to continue that, expand it in the future. That would be wonderful. Our staff worked a lot this summer. We had staff tutoring, we had staff providing extended-year services, we had professional development happening this summer. Seems like our professional development is about reading and relationships this summer and this fall. That's a focus we're definitely on too. And we really are looking forward to seeing the kids. Our floors are clean and shiny, and the walls are pretty and decorated, and the halls are empty, but that will change tomorrow at quarter of nine. Wait.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carrie Kors, principal at the Intermediate School, and like Suzanne and Kristy just said, very appreciative of all of our maintenance staff and custodians at the Intermediate School. We have twenty-eight new staff at our school, so that's a quarter of our population. We have, we had all kinds of moves, changes, and they were amazing, so I really want to give a shout-out to them. We, our teachers with that many staff, we've really been focusing on building a community. We have spent the last five days doing a lot of team-building, getting to know one another. Even some of our folks who have been there over the last two years haven't interacted due to COVID, so they also have appreciated the extra time that we've had to get to know one another. We just had last Thursday a family fun night on the playground. We partnered with the Rutland Rec. They brought a whole bunch of lawn games. We had, the fire department came and filled the dunk tank for us. We had the Boys and Girls Club there, and we got all of our ice cream donated by Stewart's. And I am not good at estimating, but for every, just kind of took a poll, and we had close to two-hundred-and-fifty people there. It was pretty outstanding. The smiles, the kids were really excited, the parents were excited, there were grandparents that they brought along. I don't think it was just because of the free ice cream, but I never know. So teachers really are excited, as Suzanne said. Our building is ready, things are fresh and clean, we have some new floors that look fantastic, so we just need to add the kids, and they will arrive at 7:45 RIS.
Hi, everyone. Patty Beaumont, the principal of Rutland Middle School. First, I want to just thank you for everything you do. I know school, it's very hard to be a school board member, particularly during these really difficult times, so anyway, I just want to thank you very much, and I look forward to working with Holden this year, so thank you. Rutland Middle School looks amazing. It is so super clean, you will hear a recurrent theme here as far as thanking everybody, but we're super excited to welcome ten new professional staff and seven new support staff to Rutland Middle School. Those seventeen individuals make up thirty-two percent of our staff, so a lot of newbies, and if you counted the first-year and second-year teachers, over fifty percent of our staff is new since the pandemic. So I think that really is a big number, so we have spent a lot of time, like everyone else, talking about building relationships, recommitting to what we had done prior to the pandemic happening, and really focusing on academics this year. So that's where we're at. Actually, I hired two additional people, but then I had to rehire, so my hiring season was very full of hiring. Let's see, so, and we are not yet fully staffed because we have individuals who will not start. Actually, three individuals still have to come on board. One of them begins with us next Tuesday, another one comes the following Monday, and then on October third, we get our final employee. So I want to thank our administrators for being so nimble in their response to what has amounted to kind of a crazy situation where we haven't started with all of our employees, so very, very unusual. We're super lucky to have all these wonderful people, and I can't wait to meet these additional individuals. Two-hundred-and-forty students we are welcoming. We only welcome half of them tomorrow because our seventh graders come at 7:45 is when we technically start, but we do serve breakfast starting at 7:30, and then we'll welcome eighth graders on Thursday, and then the whole group will be there on Friday. We do team-building activities for those three days before we begin our curriculum the day after Labor Day. So I want to thank the custodians. Two of them are new this year, and they've just been running around like crazy, helping everybody. They are such wonderful people, and like everyone else, our in-service days were super full of training and new information, and all of these poor thirty-two percent of our people are, their heads are swimming, and they're not really sure what to do. I just left, and one of my teachers is brand-new. I said to her, "You need to go home and you need to go to bed, you know, sleep early tonight," and she goes, "I can't do it, I don't know." I said, "You can do it! Go home and go to bed." That is my advice to you. So anyway, I'm really excited to start the new year.
Thank you.
So good evening. I'm Melissa Connor. I'm the director of Stafford Technical Center. As Holden mentioned, we're going to be welcoming a little over two-hundred-and-forty students from ten different high schools, plus homeschool students, starting tomorrow, and like you've heard, our first three days will really be about building strong learning communities as they get to know one another. We're excited about a couple initiatives that we're continuing from previous years that kind of started pre-COVID, and we're really kind of biting back into it. The first one is we have student ambassadors that will go through a peer leadership training this year with Vermont Works for Women on tackling conversations that can be difficult in the workplace, around gender equity, areas of discrimination and harassment, and they will actually serve as co-facilitators throughout the school year with facilitators from Vermont Works for Women, having conversations with small groups for all of our program area students and staff around microaggressions in the workplace and how to professionally respond to those. So we're excited about that, and then it also ties in nicely to some work that we're doing also with the Marzano Research Group around the school wellness wheel, and it's really looking at how you create a foundation within your school of mastery-based learning, culturally responsive instruction, and trauma-informed practices, so that it becomes part of our everyday practice. So it's all kind of tying everything together really nicely, and we're excited about it, and we're excited to get everyone back in the building from day one. Good year.
I'm Scott from Allen Street Campus. I'd like to start off talking about the summer. We had trouble getting stuff done. We had multiple projects going on at the same time, and one of the reasons we have trouble getting stuff done was we had kids showing up forty-five minutes early for extended school years, so that's a positive thing. It was nice to see their faces. Tomorrow, the students will be greeted by staff, new windows. A landscape that is maturing, and a water remediation product that created smooth pavement for them to skateboard on, so we're pretty excited about that. We're super excited to keep with our growth mindset and really work on engaging students in highly physical activities that create focus and keep building this momentum and resilience in our students.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I want to reiterate my thanks also to the Buildings and Grounds Department for all the great work that they did this summer. We're excited to start the new year. As Holden mentioned, freshmen arrive tomorrow, grades ten through twelve students arrive on Thursday. In preparation for the students' arrival, teachers have been working together this week, and last, our overarching theme has been to recommit to some of the important work that we have already begun with students. So, for example, we will continue to focus on social and emotional learning and building healthy relationships. We receive training on youth mental health, first aid, and helping students to regulate their emotions. We revisited the curriculum and assessment practices with professional development on proficiency-based practices and personalization. That was a part of that Level Three certification that we received earlier in the summer as well. Finally, I'm excited to announce that we are solidifying our place internship program with the filling of a full-time, work-based learning coordinator. So math teacher Jen McNeil is shifting over to a new position, and she will direct all of those community-based learning positions, community-based learning internships, as well as an on-campus class for underclassmen working on job preparedness and soft skills for, to get them ready for the workplace environment. So we are very excited to see this ongoing work flourish again this year, and like, again, you've heard before, we're excited to see the students again. Thank you.
Allison, can I say something quick?
Absolutely.
I think we should give our Buildings and Maintenance a huge round of applause. I myself have been in two schools recently. I was in one school, two schools today, actually, and I've seen pictures, and I can't, kudos to them. There's just not enough kudos to what they have accomplished this summer, so thank you.
All right, so next up then is our recovery update, so I believe Mr. Bliss and Ms. Bordo.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for the time. I have to say, there's kind of a recurring theme, a lot of what we would want to share about recovery and the work that's been going on since June is a lot of what you've already heard, but one thing I want to add is... But one thing I want to add is next week at the Building Committee, Glenn Scott is going to come around to the Building Committee and talk about the construction and equipment-related parts of the recovery. And then you may see that again at the next board meeting on the 13th. So what Abby and I are here to talk about is about some of the basic work that is related to students and other things that we've done. You have a little report in your packet. And to be honest, if you go and look at the first part about northwest and northeast, that talks about the summer efforts, there's a theme that goes almost all the way through the entire thing. And that is individual and small group specific tutoring, like you heard about for the middle schools boot camp. And we worked with a number of students, teachers working with kids of no more than three at a time, making sure they're getting skill-specific work on math and ELA to try to, you know, give them a boost on their learning. Curriculum and Science and Social Studies work. Lorraine Bargman, our curriculum coach, does an awful lot of work in making sure she's piloting that along. And this summer, for about four weeks in a row, she had teams of teachers coming together to work on our Science and Social Studies Curriculum and Framework. K to six, you'll see about a daily five literacy framework. We had some people taking intensive training so they can be leaders in their school. And basically, it's a how do you deliver literacy to a large group of kids in a wide range of learning? And helps them build their independence. And then just as we went through, we, we, you see all kinds of different curriculum work and instructional development. And also you'll see social emotional learning, work on responsive classroom, trauma development, making sure we have those practices that you heard about. The Marzano work for Stafford Tech and High School. And basically, just trying to make sure that we are accelerating as much as we can as we run out of the past couple of years in the pandemic and into what we hope will be an ongoing and stable face-to-face school experience. And, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think there's a, the nice part about the work is that there's a unifying element around the curriculum. But yet each building has an opportunity to focus on things that they need within their own particular building and culture. And I like that balance. I think it's really, I think, an appropriate one.
And I'm sure you look forward to hearing from Glenn at Building Committee and then also at the next board meeting. Thank you. Thanks so much.
So next up then are our committee reports. The first one is the Ad Hoc Committee of the Whole Mascot Discussion that we held last week. And I believe the board kind of came to a consensus. So I would entertain a motion regarding our meeting last week. Mary Beth.
Given the recent passing of Act 152 by the General Assembly of the State of Vermont, and given this board's passing via consent agenda, consent agenda of the first reading of Policy Number 7710 regarding non-discriminatory mascots and school branding, I therefore move to immediately retire the mascot, excuse me, retire the Raider mascot name, moniker, and imagery and any associated school branding from all Rutland City Public Schools, and that the RCPS administration immediately take up a process to replace the retired mascot with a new mascot and to bring this recommendation before the board for approval no later than the January 2023 regular Board of School Commissioners meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Stephanie?
So I've been thinking long and hard about our meeting last week. And it is again evidently clear that this board, for the third board in a row, will not come and will not compromise. Therefore, I will not be voting yes on this amendment because when it was voted to go from the Ravens to the Raiders, the moniker at that point was retired. So therefore, this act that the governor has put in Raiders has, it, it's a moot point. The arrowhead has been gone. So just the Raider ask word, the Raiders has no, it does not have a, the combination of the two is what the issue was in the beginning. And now that we've removed one part, we should be able to just stick with Raiders.
I object to retiring the Raiders name at this time. I feel like then we're leaving the students once again with no identity. I think that the Raiders name should stay in place until the school, till the administration has done the survey and we've come up with a reasonable, something that we can all agree on. They've not, for instance, there's really not been a mascot at Rutland High School for quite some time. I mean, we don't have anyone running dressed as an Indian. We didn't have a bird flying around when they were the Ravens. So I, I don't feel that it is in the children's best interest to change it now, to only then change it again. Think the Raiders name should stay in until it's changed. And again, I would agree with Stephanie that I do not feel that the Raiders in and of itself is, should be offensive to anyone. I mean, as I said before, there is a bridge named after a famous general from Rutland and it talks about him and his merry group of Raiders. That, they weren't talking about Indians there. So I think that's the connotation that a lot of people put into the Raiders name, as well as the fact that there is tradition in this community for the Raider name. And I think, you know, the Indian head has been removed. The arrowhead was removed. I mean, we had Raiders, just Raiders. I offered up as a type of, something that we might all be able to agree on by just using the R, which is what a lot of students have on their uniforms right now. And that was rejected. So I feel like the Raider name should just stay in place until this board approves of a new mascot.
I would respectfully disagree. In the history of Rutland, the Raiders has been associated with images of Native American stereotype for 80-plus years. You can't just ignore that. That's why I declined to accept the compromise that was proposed a couple, a couple of years ago. And we still have students that are offended by, by that. And I think the sooner we stop using the Raiders, the more, sooner those students are going to feel welcome in our schools. And I think that's important.
Karen?
I just wanted to echo what Kevin said. I would, I would, I'm also in support of retiring the Raider name as soon as possible. We now have legislation, we now have law, we now have something to hold it up to. It's very black and white. And we also have written proof and word from students and community members that this does harm. And if we are working in the interests of our students and our community, then the best thing to do is to put this, put this away and come up with a new name that represents the city that we want to be, the welcoming, inclusive, and safe city that we want to be. And that's the mascot that we should be looking for. So I am going to vote for putting Raiders to rest, finally.
So I believe that there is no reason why we could not reimagine what it means to be a Raider in 2022. If we do not have the ability to rehabilitate images, then there is, there is no hope for people to improve circumstances from prior. I don't see why we can't talk to the children in the community and ask them what they feel a Raider embodies and come up with some interesting illustrations that perhaps they'd like to use for the logo. So another point to be brought up was at the Ad Hoc Committee meeting, there were numerous people in the room that had mentioned that they were really worried about the children not having an, an identity, hence nobody wanting to compromise on the basic R logo. So that being said, I'm a little bit confused as to why we would be pushing so hard to be getting rid of the Raiders altogether when we don't have an alternative solution at this point in time. And we certainly don't have the arrowhead either, which makes us within the regulations of the law at this time.
I would just question how this would work in the meantime. I mean, I'm not sure this process is going to take a couple of months, I would say. So I don't understand in the meantime, there are no team, a no name. I think, you know, as much as some people want to push, people are going to continue to call them the Raiders. So I, I just don't know why we would leave them with no identity for, you know, probably the majority of the football season and into the basketball. I think that just makes us look more ridiculous than we already do on not being, not being able to compromise and for dragging this out for three years.
Anyone else? So the motion on the floor is to retire Raiders and Task Administration was coming back to the board by January 23 with a new mascot. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any, oh, Kathy on, sorry. Did I, I didn't miss you? You don't want to speak or anything, do I, Kathy?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
And all those opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. So our next committee report then is the Policy Committee. So I will turn that over to Kathy.
Thank you. So Rob put together a memo, memo that was included in your packets that outlines the policies for first reading. All basic updated, not terribly significant changes, just reviewed and affirmed or some small textual changes. We did have two policies that we tabled because we need more information. The first one is Policy 5210, that it, it relates to accepting gifts, the school, or the school district accepting gifts. And the second policy tabled was 5440. And that was around the topic of procurement. So feel free to ask any questions or come to the next policy meeting, which I would put forth as being September 20th at 4:30. If that works for everyone, if no one has any objections, especially if that's okay with you, Rob.
Yeah, we, we said that. I noticed that we hadn't updated the agenda for coming meetings, but we had discussed that and put it on for that date some time ago.
What's that date again?
It's the 20th of September at 4:30.
And I would also entertain a motion for first reading for the policies listed there in the 5000s.
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
And then next up is the Superintendent Evaluation Committee Report. So I'll turn that over to Mary Beth.
All right, awesome. Kathy and I, I'll move my computer up so I can read it better. Kathy and I met on, was that yesterday?
Day before yesterday, I think it was. Monday, Monday, 1:30.
Yesterday, yeah.
Yesterday, it was yesterday, yeah.
I drove to Stowe last night and back for hockey something or other. You know, yeah, you're familiar, Stephanie, right? So anyway, wow, it feels like Thursday. Okay. Anyway, we met yesterday with Bill Mube's office, Mube? Okay. Office to talk just through a little bit, get, get their advice. And there's really, I think, and Kathy, please jump in. I know you're not feeling great. But I kind of see there's four main topics that we covered in that meeting. One is the, the timeline for the current evaluation process that Bill is to undergo now, basically. So saying that by the 1st of September, he would submit his self-eval, including reflections and goal setting. By the 1st of October, we would release the survey to board members and the appropriate admin, which adds up to be about approximately 27 people. On 10/15, a nice, short, tight deadline to get people to get it in quickly. 10, by the 15th, the survey, 15th of October, the survey would be due. And then at the November board meeting, we have some preliminary results, which means Kathy and I would work diligently between the 15th of October and the 1st November, and the 1st, excuse me, the meeting in, in November, to have the preliminary results for the board from our committee. And then between the November and December meetings, we would, the committee would give some sort of draft to Bill to review. And at the, at the December board meeting, we would finalize the evaluation for Bill's file. And this is where I got a little confused at my notes, Kathy. I think January 1 would be like the new deadline instead of March 1 for Bill to let us know if he was coming back. Right, if he was coming back. So, okay. And I think that's what we had kind of reviewed to Bill a little bit. So, so that's the first topic we covered. The second topic we covered was related to how we would distribute the survey. In the interest of, you know, time and ease of data collection, we would use Survey Monkey. And Kathy and I talked about it with Patricia and Rob and, and Betty's going to help us out a little bit with some of the, or has helped us out with some of the data entry of taking the paper product and put it on the digital format so we don't have to read handwriting and count tallies and things like that. And handwriting can get sketchy because you might know someone's handwriting. You know, it's not as anonymous when it's, when it's in paper form. And that's my professional opinion on it. But, and Patricia's on board. I think, I think we're all on board. We think this is a really great, great way to go. So we're, we're going to move quickly to get that ready for the October 1 release to everybody. All right? And then the second thing we, we talked about, I'm going to grab my notes to make sure that I cover this appropriately. But we talked a bit about confidentiality of, of the, of Bill's evaluation and Bill's file in general. And really that there would be two files, a public file that would be more related to his contract and things like that. And then the other one would be more private and confidential eval. And this isn't necessarily Bill's file, but the superintendent's file. Eval, disciplinary action, those, those types of things, anything that's privileged and confidential. And then that would actually be housed here in Longfellow. And then we would have to review a confidentiality agreement of some sort to be able to, to review that file. Am I, is this correct, Kathy? Am I on the right path? Okay, all right, good, all right. Okay, and the fourth thing we talked about was looking to then officially make the, going back to number one, looking to officially make the changes to that timeline and the superintendent review process, change that in the actual superintendent contract so that it is reflective of a, of a more reasonable process that completes the process quicker in the, or sooner, I should say, sooner in the academic year. So if there is, there are any changes to be made, the superintendent's not coming back, whatever it might be, we as a board have plenty, plenty of time to, to work to find a new superintendent. And that we actually codify that in the contract. So Kathy, anything to add?
Only that one of the things we need to look at is our actual policies, but we'll be working on that going forward. It's not really, our process this year is a contingent upon the policy, but we'll be applying what we do to a new policy going forward.
Thank you. That was actually in my notes, but I stopped reading and tried to ad lib and I didn't do a very good job. So, thank you.
You did an excellent job.
I have a couple of questions. Why wasn't the rest of the board invited to those meetings that you've had with everybody? With Bill Mube and, I mean, the rest of the board should be included. And we were told that all committee meetings were open for the full board to attend. And I was not made aware of these meetings that were going on. I have asked for months for a copy of the last evaluation. I have yet to get that. And I was told last week that I could come to Longfellow and look at it, but I couldn't do that until next week. So I'm still very confused. And then you talk about confidentiality. Well, all personnel files are confidential. What is there a separate file maintained for every principal, every teacher? So that each, each person has two separate files? I'm a bit confused by that.
I can answer that, Karen. So first thing, this committee is just for the process. So, first thing, this committee is just for the process and to oversee the process. They are not making any decisions or they're simply following the outline of the process and keeping the board apprised. It's not a committee of the full board. Secondly, the superintendent is our only-
Just a second, I, I beg to differ with you, because I had asked about, um, this committee, thinking that originally that it was a staff relations committee, and I find out that, no, that's not the case, it's just, um, has to do with the superintendent's evaluation, but then I am told that all board members are invited to attend any meeting, and for people who are new to understand the process, I think they need to be involved with the process.
So, the process is contractual, the timeline, and that is what has been worked on for the last two years to adjust. So, that is what they were nailing down was the timeline for the process. The process itself is the evaluation tool the board adopted three, four years ago. Four, I think, actually, four or five.
Four, yeah.
Um, so, there's nothing different there, it's just the timeline, and they have to oversee the process. And, um, as far as whether other files are separate, the superintendent is the board's only employee, so he is the only employee file that the board holds. All the other files are held by the district. So, this is the only file that we have and that we oversee.
And where is this file kept?
So, it will be kept at Longfellow, so some previously-
But who, who would be able to access it? If I came to get a copy of it, who would I be able to get that from?
Get a copy. You can look at it at Longfellow, but there's no copying.
Personnel file.
Yeah, it's confidential, you can't take a copy of it with you.
I'm not taking his whole personnel file, I'm looking at an evaluation. Uh, I don't understand why that, we're all members of this board, why we would not be able to take a copy of someone's evaluation.
We never have. It's something as a board, we discuss in executive session, make our decisions, and then what goes on the file goes on the file, and the rest is destroyed. It is not anything that the board holds onto.
I'm talking about his past evaluation. I'm not talking about-
Right, so you could come to Longfellow and you could see it, but as an active board member, that is when you're overseeing those active evaluations, you can't go digging back through old personnel files.
I wasn't asking to do that, I'm asking to get a copy of the last evaluation.
So, as you were told, you can come to Longfellow and look at it.
And who do I talk to to get that?
Sherry. Do you talk to Sherry? And what, what is going to exist, conversations, um, with Attorney Mube, and Mary Beth, jump in anytime, is that Bill Olton will have a superintendent file, um, that you as a board member, while you're an active board member, will have access to, and it will have all of his evaluations. And so you will be able to see his past evaluations. You can't make a copy of it, you can't leave Longfellow with it, but you can read through the file. Um, right now, um, Bill Mube is drafting an acknowledgement of the confidentiality of that file, so when you see it, you'll have to acknowledge the confidentiality, and then you'll be able to review all of it. Does that make sense?
Not really. I mean, I've never heard of not being able to get a copy of an evaluation. I'm sure that the people who are on this committee have copies of the last evaluation, and-
Um, I, it's, in my professional experience, it's extremely commonplace to not be able to walk away with a copy of, of, of a personnel evaluation, that you go in-
Well, I'm not a member of the public asking for it.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not done, I'm not done talking. So, even myself, when I was an athletic director, if I was going to go in and look at my employees' pre, their personnel file, I could not take that back to my office. I had to go to HR, sit there, read it, take out, take away what I wanted to take away in my head, make some notes, and go back to my office, so, I think that's pretty commonplace.
Anyone else?
Just to recap, so it will be available next week, just to correct, so if you want to go and look at it.
No, the acknowledgement, how, where about that? Why is-
Acknowledgement of what?
Confidentiality.
Confidential, yeah. We just met with Attorney Mube yesterday, so, um, I can follow up with him and ask him when he thinks that we'll be ready.
So, in other words, what you're saying is we have to, in order to go look at it, we have to sign that we're acknowledging that it's a confidential document?
That you will keep it-
That is on the advice of Attorney Mube, yes.
Like, we see a lot of confidential documents that we don't need to sign a separate paper for.
Are you saying that you're developing a new confidentiality report? I mean, there must be one on file anyway that these people signed, because we've been doing this for years, right? So, there must be a report, a confidentiality acknowledgement already exists? Or are you saying we're doing a new one? This is brand new?
We're doing one, because there isn't one in existence.
This is brand new, to this-
The attorney recommended that we, that we start doing it, that's all, yeah, that Bill, Bill Mube said that it would, we probably should have been doing it, and we were.
To say that we should back it up, and when we're taking our oaths, I mean, you know, we should be signing confidentiality agreement at that point for executive sessions, um, like me as in staff relations committee, I can't speak about majority of the stuff that happens in the committee meetings, so there should be, I mean, that should be something that we should probably look into and have it be a standard when we're signing our oath to confidentiality. I mean, it shouldn't be-
I mean, as a board member, there's some responsibility does already lie with executive session, I think this is just a little bit different because it is a personnel matter.
But if we're doing it, it is, but in reality, everything, if we're in executive session, everything is most likely, it's a student matter, a personnel matter, so we should be, there should be a policy to back it up even further, not just in regards to the superintendent, but to the board, just, I mean, there's a lot of communications that we do have that are confidential, that we can't.
Is there anything else that's new to this process that's being added except for that piece, that's, that we've not done in the past? This is-
Just the timeline is, is changed, which has been changed a couple times, but, yeah, and I, sorry.
But the acknowledgement is new.
Right.
The signing of the acknowledgement is a new policy, or practice that we're putting into place at this point.
Okay, yeah.
But that's the only new practice that we're adding?
Right. Because previously, um, we had held a superintendent's file at the attorney's office, and you had to go there to view it at that time.
Bill, Bill had recommended that it be here now in case you change attorneys, and we'll have to deal with all of that, that's why he recommended that it be here. And, um, not that it's a, a different practice, Charlene, but I think Policy Committee is going to look at, I think we all agreed at one of the Policy Committee meetings in the late spring that the, the section of policy on the superintendent eval was pretty vague, and that we might actually make it more specific, and I think that's what Policy Committee's going to look at, is taking that vague, because it basically just says we have to do an eval. And it doesn't give us any, any structure around that, and I think that that's what Policy Committee might, might look at, but, um, just to make it, so we don't have to do this all the time, we don't have to keep doing this over and over again, like establishing the way we do it, so.
We're taking a really hard look at it, so that what we set in place now will last for years to come.
Stephanie?
I guess, for me, um, as Chair of the Staff Relations Committee, I guess I'm kind of confused why I feel that I should be part of that conversation, either, you know, replacing one of them or with them as the Chair of the Staff Relations, because in the end, I, you know, have a, part of my stuff is doing staff relations, so I don't know why I'm not on that.
So, the superintendent is completely separate than our negotiating bargaining teams?
Yes, but it still has everything to do with staff relations.
Totally separate, and actually you don't want that crossover, because you don't want, um, the person that's overseeing the superintendent also being the person that's overseeing the staff. It's better to separate those silos. All right, so thank you, Mary Beth and Kathy. And then, so that was it for committees. Um, we do not have any unfinished business to put to the board, and we're on to new business. Um, and we have on here a board meeting time discussion, and enclosed in the packet is our policy in which our, um, board meeting times for the full board meeting are six-thirty. There was some discussion about the possibility of moving the time up. We have our administrative team and our principals and everyone from our buildings here, um, you know, after long school days, so there was discussion about if we were able to move it up, um, board members availability, and also, you know, if it would have any impact on public availability. So, I guess I would entertain some discussion around possibly changing the meeting time.
How early are we thinking about changing it to? Or is that what you're, the discussion?
There's, there a motion or no? We're just discussing it, or?
Yeah, just discussing it, I mean-
I would say no earlier than six, that would be my thought.
Karen?
I would say we should keep it at six-thirty. I received a number of complaints about the ad hoc meeting last week that was at four-thirty, that a lot of people were still at work, and at first I thought, I don't have a prob, you know, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but in thinking about it more, I think that it's difficult for a lot of board members and future board members to say, you know, if they have to work till five o'clock, um, I know Courtney sometimes is late for committee meetings because she has to work until five, so, you know, in future, board members may have small children that they have to tend to before they could come to a meeting. So, I think because we only meet once a month, it's not that much of a hardship that we keep it at six-thirty. And for the public, good, because most of those people who may want to come are working until at least five.
Any other conversations? Mary Beth?
Um, I don't necessarily disagree Karen, I think you bring up some decent points for sure, you know, um, I do think our administrative staff is, is just here late, um, and they probably stay here. Uh, I think you're never going to please everybody, of course, on something like this. Um, you know, we have other board members that work at night, right? So, uh, so the earlier we get done, probably the better, so I think it's, you can make a case for just about anything, um, you know, I, I would err on the side of trying to make it most convenient for the admin, um, but that's just my opinion, so.
Also, we certainly could, you know, give a different time a try, and we don't need to solidify it in policy if the board is in agreement, um, we can give it a try for a couple months and, and then change the policy. Courtney?
Did admin have a proposed time? Just curious.
If, if I could add in, I mean, part, part of what, how we see it is, um, you know, there are board meetings that happen in other organizations during the daytime, so afternoon or night makes sense, I think, for, for us as a school, because we can't get people, teachers or staff out of, out of a building during the school day. But part, we have this little window of time where there's afternoon events that occur, then there's a space, and then there's a lot, a lot of times there's nighttime events, even for, for these, these two guys here, where, you know, something might be starting up at seven o'clock, or, or that, that they can't make it to, or we have a hard time making it to. So, this, this space of time in between, um, in between the, the late afternoon but before the evening might make, might be more feasible, but I, I think, like you said, Mary Beth, there's a, there's an argument against everything, so the perfect time probably really isn't there. Um, but I think a little bit earlier would, would make sense, and it would allow, you know, if we've talked about having need for more space, more time-space, gives us a little bit more on the backend.
You say, when that window, what is that window?
Well, I mean, I think, um, five o'clock to seven o'clock is, is a space of time where there, there aren't so many school events happening. Um, I'm not saying necessarily that you start at five, but that, that would be, if you're trying to figure out, when, when are the base, best segments of time, five o'clock would be a great time. Not necessarily ending at seven, but, um, you know, I think about winter events, concerts, all those things that happen at night, they're, we, we frequently have to schedule, we, all those events around school board meetings, so, so school board members can come to those events as well.
Sarah?
Um, I do work at night, as Mary Beth pointed to, uh, but I, I mean, I don't work till eleven, so for me, I have the gift of being very flexible, um, but I also have a child who is a senior in music program, and I intend to be at every single production that they do. Uh, so, an earlier one is, I like the idea of doing it earlier, I like the idea of having the admin being a little more available. Um, I had a really good thought, and it just went right out my head. Uh, I, I do understand, oh, I know what I was going to say, I liked, I, I, I liked the idea of maybe also changing the structure of the meeting round maybe, and then you put public input a little later in the meeting, so if people wanted to come and have their input, they still felt like there was space for them to get here, because you can get through all the kind of, check the box, check the box, check the box, and put the public input later in the meeting, so that people still have space to get here, even if they can't be here right at whatever, four-thirty or five, or five-thirty, whatever, but, um, I am totally up for trying something new. I like the idea of trying and seeing what works and what doesn't work, so, just my small opinion on the matter.
Stephanie?
I have a few questions. How, has this, has the board meeting always been six-thirty? No? What's, so, you, you-
It was seven, and it was six, I think, at one point, too.
How long has it been at six-thirty?
Been a while.
Long enough that nobody remembers? Okay. Um, and second, I mean, I sympathize with, you know, the long days of administration and what, and whatnot, but, I mean, I'm sure that they're in their contract, you know, it's in there, you know, it's knowing when they're signing their contract, they know they have these board meetings to go to. We all knew what time these were when we attempted to be elected and then furthermore elected. Um, and, you know, there's always going to be a conflict, no matter what, and, you know, coming down, if, if it comes down to, for, you know, Sarah, your son's, or daughter, daughter, um, you know, a music thing as a senior, you know, I mean, this, this is something that we do, but, you know, family is first, so, and it's the same thing for any of the administration, if they, we can't make it, we, it, there's times where we can't all make something, that's, that's life, that's human, so, I mean, I don't believe we should, in, in regards to public input, even if they don't show up here, they can send an email and have it read, it's not like there's no way for the public to have their input, and if they really want to be here, just like we all can, you know, make ourselves available, they can make themselves available, so I don't think the public input should be a huge part in, you know, this decision, but I don't think we should go any earlier than six, because I think that gives majority of us time to get out of work, do whatever we need to do, and take care of kids and move on.
I was just, um, I don't have strong, strong opinions anyway, either way. Um, I do think five is a little early, five-thirty or six would work fine for me, um, and thinking about trying to get out of here in time for a seven o'clock activity is probably not likely to happen.
At either time.
Even if we started at five, um, but.
Karen?
I think Courtney was first.
Um, my only worry about going earlier is if we have committee meetings, like I know personally, and I know I'm just one person, but I would struggle coming out of work at three-thirty or, or, you know, earlier than that to get to the committee meeting and then the board meeting. Um, again, I'm only, I'm only one person, and I totally sympathize with the long days, my workday started at five-thirty this morning, so I totally understand. Um, so, I, like, five-thirty would probably be, for me personally, the earliest that I could figure out, taking into account that we often have committee meetings on those days, too.
Karen?
I would just reiterate, and I feel like we're losing sight of who elected us, you know, we can't have the convenience of the school board members and the convenience of the administration and completely ignore the convenience of the public, the citizens, taxpayers who elected us, who, I understand they can, you know, email a question, but not everybody has the opportunity or availability of technology, um, even in today's times. So, I think to go earlier and to say, well, it's your own fault if you didn't come, then it's your own fault, you should have submitted a question, I, I just feel is wrong, I think it's a slap in the face to taxpayers.
So, does anyone want to entertain a motion?
I will. I'll entertain a motion to move our meetings, our monthly meeting to six PM.
Is there a second? Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So next month, we will trial the 6:00 P.M. Okay. And?
Just a point of clarification. So do we need to change this policy? Or?
Yeah, I think we do.
That can happen at the next policy committee?
If, yes, if we want to continue, but it at 6:00 P.M.
So does then it need the first and the second reading? So do we have to wait until it's been through all that whole process before we can actually change the meeting?
We can agree upon any meeting time at once.
Okay.
But the set meeting time, we would need to change the policy for a point of order.
And to kind of go with Karen a little bit, I make a second motion to move the public input down further in the agenda, maybe after committee reports.
I think we would have to look at that, because there are requirements with open meeting law with how everything goes.
Okay. So can we, at the next, can I make a motion to, at the next policy meeting, look at the, in, where in the agenda we can do that, so we can, you know, for public input?
Yeah. I'm not sure if it's suggested or if it's actually prescribed.
So do I need to make a motion for that, or do I just have to ask?
So you can make a motion to send that to the Policy Committee.
I make a motion to send to the Policy Committee, moving the time for public input to later in the agenda, preferably after the committee reports.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Wait, she started to say something.
I guess when you consider it, maybe think about the timing of, you know, when we have lots of public opinion coming, sometimes you can call them, they can have their conversation, whatever they want to speak about, and then a lot of them kind of go.
Right.
And that lets us get on to business on the other side. So that's just something to think about.
I was just saying it to kind of, because it would kind of, if moving it to that point by like that half hour, it would give, it would kind of still align with the timing on our current agenda. That's kind of like moving it to still align roughly to the same time. So, I mean, it's just worth the conversation to kind of hash that out.
All right. All those in favor, send to the Policy Committee.
Sorry.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. So first off, I want to thank everyone for being here. Wish everyone great first days in school tomorrow, or the next day, you know, as your days may fall. And so we wish, thanks everyone for their time, and wish everyone well with our opening of the school. And with that said, I need to entertain a motion for the board convening an executive session for the purpose of discussing school security measures, the disclosure of which could jeopardize and the premature, jeopardize public safety, and the premature general public knowledge would clearly place the school's district at a substantial disadvantage. And would like to include Superintendent Olson, Assistant Superintendent Bliss, Ted Palamos, and Patricia Agner.
I'll second.
Motion, exactly?
Oh, motion. Yeah.
Yes.
I'm glad you said all the words.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.